United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McShipp. Anybody have any questions on the agenda? All right, Mr. Odom, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Anything, nothing on the consent agenda then that anyone had, right?
There's a lot of major purchases for Stewart Creek High School.
It is, and some things we bid each year, too. There, you know, would be not only Stewart Creek, but another school that may be asking for the same thing. Okay, and hallway, we'll do our spotlight on education. And our other one was, first thing we had after that was insurance for pre-65. Do y'all want to wait on Ms. Nolan, or do you want to go ahead and discuss it some now, or whatever you'd like to do? Mr. Lodge, I'd be...
I'd wait, I'd wait on her.
Just wait on Ms. Nolan, if that's okay.
Okay. Okay, number nine is partner with Better World Books. The Instruction Department is requesting permission to partner with Better World Books to dispose of our used library books. Better World Books handles all aspects of inventorying, marketing, selling, and shipping. Rutherford County Board of Education receives a commission or Ingram credit, Ingram Book Company is what we're talking about. Any books deemed unsalable are donated to their literacy partners or recycled. In partnership with libraries and colleges, Better World Books has raised over 10 million for libraries and literacy partners and recycled over 67 million books. And the motion will be to partner with Better World Books for the disposal of our used library books. This is new, we have not done this before, but we're recommending that.
Any questions? Laura?
The money that's raised from our participation, does that stay in, stay here?
It does. Well, we get our commission part out of that for turning them in. Now, you do not know when, say, a school puts a box of books together until they go through with it, see if it's something that's sellable or whatever it is. So what Jeff is basically going to do is we'll take the total amount back that we received from this and divide that for new library books over those schools that submitted books. I mean, to try to divide it equitably as you can, back into library books. Jeff, do I need to add anything to that?
That's it, Ms. Trevor.
Number 10.
Number 10 is textbook adoption report ED 5099 and textbook certificate of adoption report ED 2153. School systems are required to submit textbook adoptions annually on forms provided by the Tennessee Department of Education. All textbooks are adopted on a six-year cycle. The local textbook adoption report shows newly adopted textbooks for 2013, and textbook adoptions includes elementary reading, which is readiness one through grade six, and recommend approval motion to approve the textbook adoption ED 5099 and certificate of adoption report ED 2153 as presented.
Would it be appropriate thurs- I mean, tomorrow night, maybe tomorrow night, to remind the public how these textbooks are selected statewide and then how they are selected district-wide?
We can do that, if you would like.
I think it's just a good piece of information. I think we've had some people appear before us in the past that just did not understand that process.
Okay.
And, Mr. Odom, there is a textbook advisory committee that is our own local committee, is that correct?
Yes.
And how is that committee appointed?
That committee is appointed basically with people in instruction. It's teachers, and this year there was a parent who was involved in it that looked over it. So it's mostly people that are teaching materials, familiar with the Tennessee's SPI, student performance indicators, because you're trying to get your alignment lined up with what you teach. Hopefully, you're taking a lot of individual work from teachers having to go out and find something to teach. The closer your alignment, the easier it is for teachers to be able to teach that alignment. The problem in elementary school, which is different really than high, is those people teach six or seven different subjects, stop and think, because they're self-contained classrooms. So they're doing math, reading, science, social studies, and then, in some cases, an art or something like that, addition. So we certainly strive to try to get it as close as we can with the standards that are coming, so. This is the committee's recommendation.
You mentioned that this year that committee has a parent on it that's not typical...
It's not required, hadn't been always, it hasn't been. But Ms. Jennings was on it this year, a little more.
Okay.
Number 11.
Number 11 is textbook report for kindergarten readiness reading adoption, and there's not a book, per se, for them. Recommendation, Houghton Mifflin Splash into pre-K program, and the kit cost is $2,499 per teacher. Currently, there are 17 teachers teaching kindergarten readiness, and the motion is to approve pre-K program kits as presented. So they, they do not, you don't buy a textbook every year or anything like that. This would be kind of your six-year adoption cycle.
Any questions? Number 12.
Number 12, and I probably will not try to read all the Spanish names, okay? Textbook adoption for a book not on the state list, form ED 5196, local adoption of textbooks not on contract. The Instruction Department is requesting approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract in the rules and regulations of minimum standards for which no textbooks is included in the official list of textbooks under section 1.02, program selection. It is recommend approval motion for Rutherford County to request approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract in the rules and regulations, minimum standards for which no textbook is included in the official list of textbooks under section 1.02, program selection, the following books are to be adopted for the next six years. And the first one is Advanced Placement Spanish Literature and Culture, and that is the book selected. The next one was Advanced Placement French Language and Culture. And the third one is be Rutherford County's first time, The Bible, Its Influence by Ship, Stetson Publishing, The Bible Literacy Project, 2011, second edition, and that I ask being number for the Bible. We will have two high schools next year. We offered it as a, an elective course offering, and so two schools, it actually was Laverne High and Blackman High, students signed up for this course. It'll be the first time for Rutherford County, for an elective course. This book's been vetted quite a bit, it's been used at other places. Wilson County's done it for a number of years, and I'll talk more as a literature, as some history, art, and that sort of thing, from that particular angle. But this, this is a state course code number, so it's been around for a little while.
So what's the teaching qualifications?
Social studies, it's a credit in social studies, so basically, but the principals have talked with people who would be willing to do that, it's not necessarily going to say you go in and teach it, but someone that they feel comfortable with and understand it.
I would, I would think clearly that, that would be a very important selection...
It is.
...to do, because there can be, there can be some lines that are going to be questioned without, I would think, well, do this, if you're interested.
But it is an elective course?
Sure.
So students can choose to take it or not to take it, and it's not required, so it gives you one more credit in social studies, if you're interested.
Number 13.
13 is the Eagleville High School City Sewer Connection. Director of Schools, Mr. Don Odom, has received a letter from Eagleville Mayor Sam Tune, requesting an impact connection fee of $70,000 and a monthly billing of $4,000. The fee and the monthly billing is equivalent to billing and fee paid at other school locations. Rutherford County Schools Construction Engineering Department is also working with Jamie Reed at site engineering, design engineer for the project to install a pipe from the new plant back to the sports complex at Eagleville High School, so repurified water can be used to irrigate the sports complex, creating water savings. The funds for the impact fee in the construction of Eagleville High School to prep for the new system connection will be included in 2013-14 capital improvement budget, and that whole amount is estimated to be $250,000. And the motion is to approve City of Eagle Sewer Impact Connection Fee and Monthly Billing as presented. And Mr. Clardy's been working on that, he'd like to ask some questions. We'll do that. We use a repurified at Siegel now, that complex, we approved several years ago with that. I think he's negotiated down the monthly fee by about $1,000, too.
Laura?
The system that we presently have between those, between the gym, the old, the old gym and the football field, will, what will happen to that? Will it just sit there, or will we disassemble?
Um, there'll be a tank there that pumps around to the other side of the, well, we have another pump over, over the cleaning in the school building and the EMS building there. So let's all, larger tank there, the sewer will come into the tank that you're referring to, it'll be pumped around, and then it'll be pumped out there down to the sewer plant.
So will there actually need to be a structure there, or will it be underground?
There'll be a fenced-in area, but it will be a closed system, and also, we're investigating putting in a larger tank, another large tank, to receive repurified water back from sewer plant to water the ball field out there. So that'll be a huge saving.
With the new, with the new sewer connection, it'll be a lot less aromatic out, out there at football games and other, the aroma over the years has been pretty tingeant, if you will, so that'll be, be nice to, to have that out of the way.
Oh, they're controlled, not real problem.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
I just think this is a good, good thing. We just need to continue looking at other schools and see what other things we can do to, to...
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't here.
I, I was just saying, I think this is a good move, and we just need to look at other opportunities, see what other schools we can implement something like this at other locations, so.
The, the other, the only other school that we need help on right now is Whitworth, I mean Buchanan Elementary School, and we actually already have a design done on the system out there, but we swapped Eagleville around and bumped it out of here and moved Eagleville in the spot on capital improvement this year. So next year, we'll get Buchanan.
Good job.
Anybody else? 13B.
13B is Energy Management Grant Proposal. We, we are approached by energy management companies from time to time, and you can go with an energy management company that does this nationally, and they, any savings, you're supposed to, to, they get a percentage of that, but it's their calculations that do. Mr. Clardy's been able to apply for a grant to cover the cost, where we can do a lot of this management and tracking ourselves, which means you do not have to pay back anything to some other company. But anyway, this is a proposal. The Energy Efficient School Council, EESC, has allocated $167,060 to Rutherford County Schools to establish an ongoing energy management program. The four minimum criteria for this grant are board-adopted energy management conservation policy that includes protection of indoor environmental quality, establishing a baseline of at least one year of historical utility data, and benchmarking utility data on Energy Star Portfolio Manager for a number of schools that will account for at least 50% of the total square footage at the, in our total district is about 8 million square feet. Contract ASHWAY Level 1 adults with CEM or BEAP on a number of schools that will account for at least 10% of the total square footage, and establish an energy action plan that identifies roles and responsibilities, including an energy management advocate for the district. Rutherford County Schools proposes to use the grant to fulfill these minimum criteria, and with the remaining grant allocation, demonstrate the ability to collect and organize real-time energy and facility data and use software to provide intelligence to an energy manager position hired by Rutherford County Schools that result in measuring, measurable energy efficiencies. The energy management system in the first year of the energy manager salary will be submitted for reimbursement under the grant. Rutherford County Schools will also receive training under the grant, including training on four building surveys to review operation and maintenance of mechanical systems and controls, training in energy management intelligence software, training and understanding of ASHWAY audits, and training to understand ROI of energy conservation activities. Rutherford County Schools has selected professional services of the Mechanical Resource Group, MRG, under this grant. Ron Graham, the General Manager of Energy Service Mechanical Resource Group, LLC, will be here tomorrow night to go with the proposal in detail with the Rutherford County School Board. The motion will be to approve the proposal from Mechanical Resource Group to help apply and qualify for EESC grant of $167,060, with $64,918 going to hire an energy manager for the first year. The future salary for the energy manager will, will come from any utility savings. And Mr. Clardy can certainly talk to you about that. We discussed it extensively, but I, I think, step up and let him talk to you about it, because I think there's some potential here for us.
Also, we have Ron Graham scheduled tomorrow night to do a brief presentation concerning the entire program. And Ron was the director of EESI for, from the concept through this past year, and now there's a gentleman there, his name is Paul Cross, from Murfreesboro, who's taking that position over from Ron. Ron retired, so he understands all the requirements. This program, over the past four years, we've worked hard to get to this point, so this just moves everything to the next level that we need to be out to realize any other savings that are out there in our energy consumption. And we have the opportunity to participate in INNORNOC, which is a TVA program that helps us lower our peak values, that sets a rate for energy that we buy from Middleton C and the other electric company, where it's kind of a brownout situation where they will contact us, for instance, if Nissan needs extra power during the day, and we can cut back our consumption in the late afternoon, maybe at 2:30 or something, right before schools are getting out, so they can use that power somewhere else. And our peak energy, peak demand will come down, which will lower our entire bill, plus TVA will pay us for that power that they use during that period. So we hope to realize some money in that respect also.
Is there a question?
I guess I'm just not very bright, I hadn't figured it out, but I trust you, Mr. Clardy.
Thank you. We worked pretty hard to get to this point.
Well, I, I do, I mean, you know, you kind of identified the benefits, and we've seen other conservation programs that we've used that have done exactly that. I think it's extraordinary that we pursue these things the way that we are. Do you have any idea in mind, dollars and cents wise, what you think it can produce for us?
I kind of hate to say anything, because I don't want to come up short.
Sure.
But I'd say that we could save at least $150,000 to $250,000 a year off the TVA deal, plus with the energy manager, we might save that much more. And so we definitely want to pay for his salary and benefits every year, plus have some money left over. So if you recall the policy, it says that that will be shared to put back into the system, a percentage of it will. So we want to put that back into, so we can monitor other systems, other schools, buildings, and put the correct telemetry and things on there, so we can manage that power. So with this thing, as we save money, put it back in there and create more savings in other buildings that we're not currently have on the computer system.
I've already admitted, I probably wouldn't be able to figure it out if it didn't work out for us, so.
Well, at least we will know how much we're saving.
Sure.
And it won't be a question of someone else coming in here with a figure and say, I saved you a half million dollars this year, and I want $450,000 of it. There's kind of no, really no way to tell, but we'll know from that standpoint ourselves.
We've already pursued some conservation efforts with lighting and water conservation. You mentioned the cooperation with TVA and the power sharing. Will we get into the possibilities of any type of green power production or anything like that with the open real estate that the schools occupy?
There's a possibility right now that's very expensive, the payback on it is, takes too long to make it profitable or return on the investment. What we want to do is, through this process, is make sure that the energy that we're using, we're using it as efficient as we can, and we don't have rooms overheated or overcooled, those types of things, so we can monitor that. But also, we can hope to be able to investigate other ways. I went up to Kentucky a couple times and looked at systems they had up there, and they're putting in roof panels that are solar panels, and it's so expensive to store the stuff, so instead of using it, it goes back into the grid to pay for the power that they're pulling off the grid. So, and it's still expensive to do that, but there's some opportunities, I think, but you got to have someone that's dedicated and knowledgeable to watch that every minute of every day.
Would you anticipate that this new position would not only be monitoring or reporting on these things, but also possibly take up the responsibility of writing new grant requests and such with these type of situations?
Yes, I think so. And, you know, the INNORNOC deal, for instance, we've been approached over, you know, the last three years to do that, and we could have done it, but it would have been a failure because we just didn't have anyone that can make sure that, you know, that it stays online, and if we, there's certain criteria that you have to meet, and if you don't meet it, then you don't get kicked off the program, but you just don't get paid for it. So we want to make sure that we're meeting the criteria when we go into those programs.
Being able to do this with a grant's a very good thing.
Absolutely.
You know, if you go with the try.
And there'll be some more money through EESI, as I sit on that council and several other people from the area do, so there'll be some more money available for us as the loans that were originally made to all the systems throughout the state come back in.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Clardy. Before we go to number 14, is Ms. Nolan, you want to speak now, or you want to wait?
I'm ready.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go to number 14.
Number 14, I think, was asked to place on it coaching supplements. You should have in your package what we currently pay for coaching supplements, and it's roughly 1.9 million, I think, is what Jeff said, about what it costs us annually. So I'm not sure who asked to put that on there, what's the discussion with this?
I, I made the request to do so. I've been contacted by someone, and the information that I was given to check on is, was either misinterpreted by me or inaccurate, because I see the supplement there that I want to check. So I think it's good to put eyes on it. Sure, I'm certainly not any, any, any preparation to ask for any changes specifically right now, but I would like for all of us, as board members, to take a look at it and see if there are things that we need to, to suggest change in some particular way and add, or whatever it might be. And I just, I just anxious to put some eyes on and see, and as I say, unless I've misinterpreted something, it's, what I was going to ask for is not, not going to need to be asked for.
I might say about this sheet, if it says assistant coach, in some cases, schools will take and say, say you have one allocation there of 10, 11%, some schools will take and two people will do it at half each, which we do not keep them from doing, but the total cost to you remains the same if one person gets it or if they decide to divide that among two people. This used to be negotiated as part of the contract, annually.
I might should know the answer, this, this is kind of here, but not, I know we have volunteer or other assistants that are there that, that are paid through other funding and so forth. What's the limit in football, for example? How many people through TWSAA are they allowed to have, does anyone know?
TWSAA, I can answer that.
Yeah.
We had a meeting, I'm sorry, this is... We had a meeting about four years ago to go over the procedures for volunteer coaches, and at that time, we set limits to the number of volunteers that could participate with each sport based on TWSAA guidelines, and for football, it was three volunteers to actually help assist the team.
So that's beyond the, the...
That's beyond that.
Five assistants, so head coach, five assistants, three more, so...
Correct.
Nine staff, and even if they don't want to be paid, they're not allowed to have that 10th person...
That's correct.
...participate.
And we track those, when we, when, when you approve the volunteer coaches, we track those on a spreadsheet to make sure we don't exceed the allowable number for any sport.
Now, but, excuse me.
Ms. Barnes.
Ms. Barnes.
Ms. Barnes.
I'm sorry. Let, let me ask you that. You say coaches now, do you, and assistant coaches, do you track statisticians? Do you track any other supplemental type of duties?
No, sir, we don't, because typically those people are employees of the school, but if they are volunteers coming in and serving the school and they're not our employees, they should be approved as a volunteer.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Ms. Barnes.
You kind of caught me off guard. Now, did you say a volunteer as a, as an employee of the school? Because I thought we...
Certified employees. We have certified employees who can, who can assist with the sport, because they, they're paid a salary. We do not allow our classified staff to serve as volunteers, because we get into wage and hour issues, and we've just made the determination several years ago not to do that.
Well, I mean, and the reason I was asking is because on a Friday night, there's 15 to 20 running up and down the field acting like coaches. I didn't know how you clarify that or not.
Well, we really have to leave that to the discretion of the school, because you're right, and that conversation has come up before, because people hold the signs and they do all kinds of things. So the school is supposed to set the limits to allow only certain people on the ground, on the field, to do their task.
Some of those people tend to be student managers of that team and stuff, and I can remember going, I kept stats in basketball and stuff, so very often, they'll teach somebody, one of the kids, to do that, and they can mark it quite well, do. Some of those people you see very well may be juniors and seniors or something doing that same thing.
It, it's something to be very difficult to monitor, but at the same time, the interpretation by one school versus another could give a school an unfair advantage, because they push the envelope, can we say it that way?
What?
And I understand what you're saying, but by calling something else.
It, it's also dangerous over there on the sideline. I mean, you know, broken legs have been numerous, and I, I just wonder, you know, how, if we're getting too many out there.
Well, again, that's, that's not something we have tracked, but we have just told them they have to limit their number of volunteers who assist with coaching.
Okay.
Mr. Carter?
Has there ever been a, I know there's a job description for each of these positions as it exists on its standard, but for the duties that are related to these percentages, has there ever been a, a description of what those duties are?
Not to my knowledge.
And the percentages pretty much have been based upon the time that it takes to be involved in that particular activity, is that correct?
And these were all negotiated, back in the days of a negotiated contract, all of these were negotiated. We haven't made any changes since the contract with the RE8 ended, so these have been in place for quite a long time. All we did over time was to add to. All we did over time was to add to the list and occasionally increased a percentage. So, this, this percentage is based on a BS and five years experience. So, when we calculate the formula, we take BS and five years, and we find that salary, and we multiply that percentage, and that determines the amount.
So, even if they have credentials beyond that, the supplement is only on the BS and five?
Anybody else on this? Skip over number 15. Number 16, you say?
16 will be tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, 16. We're on general discussion right now, and then we'll let Ms. Nolan go after that. General discussion.
Just that, I think we were fortunate across the state for two initiatives to not come to fruition, the statewide charter and the state right authorization and the voucher bill. So, they certainly will be back next year as the elected superintendent and some of the other burrs in our saddle, but they certainly aren't gone. And our due diligence is to stay in touch with our, our elected officials that represent us on the state level to convince them that none of those three initiatives are good for, for education.
Ms. Carter?
In part, having to do with item 16 on the agenda, our board meeting of March 14th and potentially the board meeting tomorrow night may have visitor comments that I've become aware of, you know, the possibility of citizens who may come tomorrow evening. I took it upon myself to contact at least one of those individuals and explain to them that the traditional typical manner of the board is to receive those visitor comments at the beginning of the board meeting and not enter into a dialogue with the visitor. And then it is tomorrow night, item 17, general discussion about board members, where we anticipate, or one could anticipate, that a board member might have something to say about the visitor comments or anything else. I think that that's important for the general public to understand, and I think that we may avoid some of the backlash that we experienced March 14th if we can somehow make the public aware that it's at that item 17 when they may anticipate a board member to address those concerns, but certainly not at item six when visitor comments are. Hopefully, that word can get out, and if you attend board meetings on a regular basis, you come to understand that.
We actually met an hour and a half today, Mr. Zago and I, with a lady and a couple of representatives, and talked about, they asked some questions, gave them some of the same information that we got, tried to clarify some of the requirements of the state and that sort of thing. So, we, we listened a long time, it's about an hour and a half today that we did that this morning.
And, you know, we have in our board policy that where we go and experience additional training activities, all of the board members, I went to the National School Board Conference. I had the opportunity to sit in on another presentation by Bill Daggett, who was instrumental in the Common Court Reparation through his foundation, and some explanation of that. And we continue to be vigilant to understand and, and have an impact on how that and many other issues of education are, are being prepared for the future.
Tucker?
To that end, a point that I wanna make sure that we as a board have addressed appropriately, and I feel confident we have, is that of concussions with football. That's a, that's a, has got national news and notoriety, and just wanna be affirmed at least that, that we've done everything that we need to do to position our coaches and other personnel, frankly, that they're very aware of the procedures there, so.
Maybe a new statute that came through this time, but I haven't seen them all. There was one introduced, deal with that in the legislature, but I don't know that I've seen the final version of that.
I saw it.
I think so.
I'm sorry.
Concussions, about student concussion, that's it.
I have not seen the final version.
I guess I'm asking from our standpoint, are we doing our due diligence to be sure that appropriate training is, has been, is being done and has been done to not only protect our kids, also protect ourselves?
I'm pretty confident that's a requirement in the statute, that, that those individuals have to be trained, it has to be a licensed physician or to, to examine before that, that child or student can, can re-enter practice or.
We're doing all of that.
But, you know, TWSAA, when it, first year it came out, they required a doctor, and they had to sign it and bring the note to the officials. Last year, they relaxed that and said, oh, anybody can sign it, don't even have to hand it to the officials, there's nothing we can do about it. So, if they wanna send one back in with the eyes swirling around or whatever, we have to let them in.
Well, and, but it's not the TWSAA official's job to do our job. Our job is to make sure our coaches understand that. Because our coach and our system's the one that's gonna get sued, not TWSAA, and rightfully so. So, I mean, I applaud frankly that the fact that TWSAA stays out of it. I think it is the job of our coaches to do that.
But, but when it's, when it's picking out who's getting sued, the officials get sued right along with, well, you shouldn't let him back in. You know, I mean, it's, and you're right, that our county coaches do a great job in not letting them back in, but other coaches, you have to be careful, other coaches do.
Early on, when I saw the statute, some of the earlier versions of it, it's gonna require a policy or something, there may be some wording that has to go in your policy. So, my guess is you're gonna be addressing it as soon as we see what the policy might be.
It will need to be strong wording, too, I think.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't think we're bound to the, to the whatever is there. We could, we can take that and use our basic point and go beyond that if we feel like it's appropriate to do. But I, I just want that affirmation. I felt very comfortable that we were.
Anybody else? All right, Ms. Nolan, you're on stage. We'd like to welcome you.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on some information that I know that Jeff presented to y'all. And I think the discussion here was on the retiree insurance rate. You know, the history, I don't know who all on this board, if you were here in 2006 or 2007. I don't think so. But that was a painful, painful time for the county and our health insurance. It was also the time when we were implementing a GASB standard that required us to determine a cost of what benefits that we offer our retired employees. At that time, in, let me just go back. Prior to 1999, retirees paid 100% of the insurance rate. In 99, the commission agreed to fund 50% of the premium. The problem was, over time, whenever there was a rate increase, there was not a willingness to pass on the rate increase to the retirees, no different from the discussion we're having today. So, we moved from that point to 2005, 2006, that said, you have to determine what does it cost to give retirees this health insurance benefit? What does it cost? Well, that's the first time that we did an analytical review and analysis on the rate. And what we found at that time is that the pre-65s were paying their share. The premium that was charged was paying the cost of their cost. It was the post-65 folks that were not, where they were supposed to be paying 50% of their premium, they ended up paying 19%. When we got down and said, what is the rate that we should be charging? And they were only paying 19%, not 50. So, a lot of those folks had been retired for years. So, we said, how, we just can't do that. We just morally cannot take that kind of a hit to those people. So, we started stratifying, and we said, okay, for these people that have retired and been gone, we will now agree to pay 25, or 75% of their premium, of the adequate premium. And I wanna make a distinction, an adequate premium as opposed to a fake premium, because that's what the premium had evolved into, the rate that we were charging. It had no basis, it was just a number. It would be no different than me coming to you and say, hey, you know, I want insurance, but you know, I only wanna pay $300. And you say, okay, you know, it didn't matter, I had lots of recs, that's just the premium I wanted to pay. So, at that point, and it was painful, and it was, it, it was not a pleasant time to get us to the point of where we, where we are today. And again, every year, we analyze, what is the rate, what we should be changing? So, some of the discussion I just heard is that we just can't do that, we don't, we want them to blend. I think that was, can we blend them? Okay, so what are you really saying? We don't want the retirees, we've already calculated the rate to be what it, what has been presented, but we don't want to charge them that rate. We want to charge them a different rate. We want to charge them the rate of the actives by blending them in.
To make sure I understand, when you say, when you've determined the rate, that rate is determined by a small 165-member older group?
I agree.
With, and, and I'm 59 myself, and the issues that I have today are not what I had at age 25 and age 35. So, I think what we have been trying to figure out is, or, or we've wondered about, why would the pre-65 have been set up?
Think of it this way, think of it this way, and I, you know, I don't think there's any dispute that if we blended everybody and put them in a pool, the rates would be different. But then I'm gonna say to you, how much does it cost to provide this benefit? If you did not have retirees in the mix, the rate for actives would be the rate for active, right? I mean, if you, if you said, you know, once you retire, you're gone. And I understand, yes, it is a small pool, but the cost of giving the benefit of allowing these folks to be on our insurance plan, the plan is what is designed, how much does it cost to provide that? I mean, I, I am, I am with you 100%. If we blended them together, it would be a different rate because the, the risk is shared amongst a lot more people.
And I don't, and I don't wanna debate, but to me, this boils down to an issue of fairness, that we have these men and women that have given 30, 35, maybe 40-plus years to our children in serving the education community, and, and they have been set in this small group that with having 165 older employees or retirees, if you will, they are gonna have some medical issues. And, and in the corporate world, that's why you have a large group policy, is to, is to blend your younger employees who should have less issues to, to make up the difference between your older, well-established employees and experienced employees and loyal employees to make that rate better, if you will. And, and I just, I don't understand setting up, because if GASB is the issue, I just can't imagine that you still would not be able to account for those individuals in a reporting opportunity, but still give them and the entire group the, the benefit of a, of a decent, competitive, affordable health insurance rate.
Right, okay. Two points. The ones that have retired are loyal employees. You have employees right now who are also building time with this system and are loyal employees that hoped one day to be in the category of the ones that retired. Agree?
Certainly.
Okay. What GASB required us to do is figure out, again, how much does it cost to give this benefit to people who, when they retire, a health insurance benefit? You've got to figure that out. And then turn around and say, okay, Joyce has been here, have we recognized that cost that we're going to have to pay in the future for her? We don't. It's the active rate it's for today. If you were going to factor in a cost to be able to pay those benefits in the future today, you would need to add about $11 million more to your budget, to the current year budget. That's, now, this, these numbers I'm quoting are from our last actuarial study. We will have a new one, which is where I'm getting to on what the proposal is because it has an impact. I asked Melissa to just kinda give me some numbers of what would the rates look like if we're blending? Do they have their sheets in front of them? Again, it goes back to, I know what you're saying, and I don't dispute, if you blend them all together, the rate is less because it's over all the population. I don't dispute that. But I'm trying to get to, what does it cost to give a retiree a health insurance benefit? That's, that's where we're, we're at with this.
Well, but see, you're using a term that, that I don't think should be, retiree gives it a different connotation. It is still an, an employee that is under the age of 65. And we all understand that there's, there's federal statutes that apply to the 65.
And I am just speaking to that pre-65 group.
Right. And Ms. Nolan, it is just blatantly unfair from where I sit.
Okay, I, here's what I'm saying, is that what you're, what I'm hearing is, is the discussion is, we've got a rate that was determined, and it is a high rate, and we don't want to charge that to our retirees. We want to charge something less, even though the rate that is calculated for that pre-65 group, let's say, on a single, on a single co-pay, is 848.37, that's what it has been determined, what the total premium should be. But for an active, if we blend it, and I hope I'm speaking right to this, is substantially less, $511 a month, that's a difference. Okay, so that's what you would like to be the premium for this group. Accounting wise, what we're really saying is, the county will pick up that difference between 848 and 511, because we don't wanna charge that to the employee, but it's gonna be charged.
But you would, but you wouldn't have that rate if they hadn't been placed in a small group?
I understand it. Insurance, you're saying, is a risk. I'm saying, what is it cost to provide this benefit to this group of people? If this group of people were not in our insurance plan, if the county was like a lot of other counties in the state of Tennessee, that when you leave, it's gone, I mean, we're one of the few counties who offered this benefit. So, I'm saying, we're, GASB requires us to determine, what does it cost to give this benefit?
Does GASB require us to determine it in the categories that we've set up, or are these categories that we've set up on our own design?
GASB requires us to determine the cost to give a benefit, it's called OPB, Other Post-Employed. It's called OPB, Other Post-Employment Benefit. What does it cost to give that?
So, Gadsby only, does Gadsby only apply to post-employment?
Gadsby, Gadsby is a, a rule standards of how we do our accounting. This Gadsby forty-five is just one standard that addresses post-employment benefits. For us, that benefit is just healthcare. But other people, it could be life insurance or other things. That's why it's wrapped up in this other-
So, Gadsby forty-five only applies to post-employment, and our only benefit is health insurance?
Right.
So, that's why it is specific. Now, we have chosen to divide that into pre-sixty-five and post-sixty-five-
Because?
Because of what you explained at the beginning from nineteen ninety-nine and past.
Well, no, because somebody who is after six, after sixty-five, they're now Medicare-eligible. That means Medicare is their primary insurance. We become secondary. So, the premium is a whole lot less on a pre-sixty-five. We just become a secondary policy.
Okay.
But for somebody who is bef, you know, pre-sixty-five, we are it.
Was the same calculation method used one year ago?
Yes.
And so, in the course of one year, the pre-sixty-five matrix has, actuaries have resulted in a, in a fifty percent increase in that premium?
Yes. Well, actually, you know, I've, I've got some information for you. And this is just comparing twenty-eleven to twenty-twelve. And this is, I'll, I'll give you these numbers, um, for a active. This is a per-employee, per-year, per-employee, per-year. Two thousand and eleven, for the medical and pharmacy, was ninety-six hundred. A pre-sixty-five in two thousand and eleven was eleven thousand, five thirty. Now, for two thousand and twelve, an active went to nine thousand, seven hundred, ninety-six. And our pre-sixty-five went to four, well, almost fifteen thousand dollars.
Ms. Nolan?
Sir?
From where I sit, what you're explaining to me, and, and, and I'm not refuting any of it, but if we, if, if this county is going to do that, we could do the, okay, you've got the pre-retirees, and then we're going to throw everybody from forty-five to fifty-five in a group, and everybody from thirty-five to forty-five in a group. And as they grow older, that group is going to do worse. And it's, and-
I agree, I agree. I guess, I'm not disagreeing with you at all that if we blend them in, we put, but even if we blend them together, we've got to calculate, what does it cost?
Okay, but, and, and I know Mr. Hodge and I were probably the only board members that were around when Gadsby started, uh, you know, haunting us the way it has. But i- it's an accounting, it's, it's a reporting.
It, it is, but there is a cost to it too. I mean, I just- Back in ninety-nine, and I'll use the school board, I had Jeff, uh, check for me. It is a cost. In nineteen ninety-nine is when all this, we're going to pay half of the rate. So, in the first fiscal year was the two thousand, two thousand and one. The budget number for the schools was about a hundred and, a hundred and fifty thousand to pay that fifty percent of the premium cost. And this is, you know, the benefit was given to everybody who's retired right now. Let's go, this is, we're going to, you know, we're going to pick up half. A hundred and fifty thousand. The number today, in your budget today, is one point eight million. There is a cost.
But that's, but that cost-
It's not accounting.
But that cost is, is, is benefit and actuarial related because-
That-
The health insurance from even the corporate level has, has increased exponentially. So, consequently, it's going to affect us also.
I guess I just want to get you to understand that we've got to figure out the cost. Now, I'm just using the numbers that, um, Ms. Denson gave me, that this is what we're, what you are saying, this is what I'm hearing you say, is that we don't want, we would like to blend that rate. Though we already have an, an amount of what they should, what the pre-sixty-five should be paying, but we don't want them to pay that. We want to blend them in and to see what the rate is. So, the difference between, if you look on your sheet, uh, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars a month is what the premium would be for, uh, a co-pay. The difference between that and the employee-only portion, that's a cost that we're, the county will be absorbing, that difference. And then the county would be paying half of that five hundred dollar rate. So, we move from a fifty-fifty split of adequate rate, not the rate of blending, but the adequate rate to fund this benefit. We move from fifty to seventy percent. And that's, we're, the county's going to be paying seventy percent of that cost.
But see, that's where I, I find this unfair, that the, because the rate you're talking about is determined because this hundred and sixty-five-person group that is older and is going to experience more health issues has been segregated from the larger, much, much larger group.
But we have segregated them since ninety-nine.
Can I ask you this way?
Yes, sir.
I'm sixty-one years old, retired, so I will not vote on any of this. I've already made that known. But if I were still teaching, you're saying you would pay less on me than I, you would because I'm retired? It would cost you a dime more. Knock on wood, you hadn't paid a nickel on me in forty years.
It's, I go back to Lois Miller and her information that she gave to us. And that was, people who are in that fifty-five to sixty-five age, or pre-sixty-five, they're healthier if they stay working than if they are at home. So, you need to come back to work.
No, I, I mean, seriously? I mean, we're, we're saying that someone sixty-one years old that is working right now is less risk than I am?
I, I'm just saying that, I'm, I'm just saying what was said to me.
I've already admitted, I'm not very smart, so I don't figure that one out either.
And again, I'm just going back to what we, what we experienced in oh-five, oh-six, when we really had to drill down and we had to come up with, what does it cost us, the county, to give this benefit? Because now, what happens, if this is the, the course that we're on, is that we don't want to give this much of a cost to the retirees, then we turn around and, and I have to report this to my actuary, not the actuary that figures the rate, but the actuary who now is going to determine, how much is that now going to cost in the future for current active employees that when they hit that point, the county is not going to be, it's not going to be a fifty-fifty, it's now going to be a seventy-thirty?
Basically, you're, what you're telling the, the employee that may be burnt out after thirty years of teaching, "Oh, you might as well stay teaching till you're sixty-five."
You know, that's, you know, it's not, it's not just a teacher-
That's just what you just said.
I did. But it's not just a teacher, it's a sheriff's deputy, it's other people, and it's, they're all over.
Yeah, but that's what you're saying.
All over. Yep. I'm saying, look, I'm in that boat too. Where I may have thirty years in a couple of years, that's going to have to be a, a decision.
I just, I still think it's, it's unfair to, to these individuals that they've been separated out.
I understand, I understand. I'm just saying that if this is the way that, that, if the insurance, I'm not a voting member of the, I am not a voting member, I am just a report-the-numbers girl.
What is the cost? Have we sat down and figured out what the actual cost is? If we do blend them?
I haven't, no. I had, that's, I just called my actuarial to, um-
Before we say no to this, we need to really-
To say, what, what is the cost? Well, I don't know if I'll have it this week or not. But anyway, there is a, you know, in the short term, again, it's, this is what, what we're saying, and that's what, um, you know, I'm sure when you retire, you want, you'd like to have seventy percent of the premium paid too, see?
And I hope you don't think we're being mean to you because you're a messenger.
And I don't take it that way. I don't take it that way at all. I just, you know, it's, it's how you hear it and then how we have to account for it.
Thank you. Former director, Mr. Gill, used to always say, you know, a society or, and, and a system is judged by how we treat our children. Well, I, I think we're also judged by how we treat our older citizens too. And, and, and-
And, and, you know, I, I, I understand, but just don't look at that group, look at everybody who's still working and then look to them and say, "Oh, yeah, by the way, you're going to get that benefit too."
But if you look at the corporate structure, I mean, well, and Mr. Tackett made the point. You know, you've got a sixty-one-year-old pre-retiree, pre-sixty-five retiree, but we're going to charge them a, they're going to be charged a heck of a lot more than that sixty-one-year-old that is still working for the system.
How many in the corporate world offer health insurance benefits after they retire?
But that's not the question.
I, I, I guess I'm just saying, you're bringing up corporate, and I just-
Well, but I'm not-
That doesn't have anything to do with the conversation, as I see it.
I'm not, I'm not disputing not having. I'm just saying, we've got to account for the cost of it.
And I would think-
And what is the cost?
Well, and, and you'll be able to, the actuaries do what they do.
That's what they do.
They, they will determine the cost.
And that, that's all I'm saying, is that we, you've got to be prepared. If this, if that's the route we're going, then what we're saying is, the county will pay seventy percent of the premium of the retiree.
Not if it's part of the big?
I'm saying, no, wait, okay, let's, let's, um, these folks here, in your budget, every category, uh, regular education, special education, you've got a line for health insurance. All right? That's the county's paying. That, that's the county paying that share of the employees. I mean, you're paying, you're paying over there, I'm just saying, account for it and pay, and, and pay it over there.
And, and I, and I think the accounting part would be, would be the easy part. Paying for it is where we, where-
All of this, we can account for it? I'm just saying, we, we go from an eleven million dollar to give this benefit to all the employees, really costs the system eleven, you know, the, the actuary value is eleven million dollars that we're not putting any money aside for.
But it's, but if we're all, if they're all blended, the claims, the claims and the premiums are all the same.
Okay, okay. I, again, yes, when you, you blend it all together, but I, if I come to you and I say, "Wang, how much does it cost to give retirees health insurance? How much does it cost? What would you do? What's their claim cost? It costs this much to, three million dollars. That's the cost of their claim."
So, so Gadsby makes you take each individual age and determine the cost of insurance?
It requires me to determine, how much does it cost to give retirees health insurance?
From your eighteen, nineteen-year-old classified employee to all the way up to blood rings before he retires. You do it, the cost of their insurance when they have retired.
So, you're-
So, all this that we're talking about has an impact on future retirees, not just the ones here, and not just the ones that we're talking today, but your future ones coming.
Well, if you're going to, if we're going to continue, if they're going to continue to save fifty and plus percentage rate, you won't see any pre-retirees.
You know what? I'm going to, I'm going to talk about something that I am not an expert in right here. And, and I've got a really good friend who is in that boat. And so, the decision is, I may come to your business and see what kind of rate I get. Go out in the market. I don't know-
But you, you can't, at, at, at our age, you can't go into the market because pre-existing, uh, on, on an individual basis, you can't jump into an individual market and expect to have a decent rate in the coverage.
But one-one-fourteen, that's out. Pre-existing goes away at one-one-fourteen.
Well, I'm not sure what actually does happen in one-fourteen because there's a lot of-
Supposedly, oh, one-one-fourteen, pre-existing goes away.
Okay, supposedly.
Supposedly. We'll see as it comes about.
Did you say a moment ago that in nineteen ninety-nine, the cost of this was a hundred and fifty thousand?
For the school board, in their budget for two thousand, two thousand and one, was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. And in two thousand thirteen, we're looking at one point eight million?
In the current year, you're at one point eight. I think Jeff has estimated two point two for next fiscal year.
Okay. So, when we're talking about that, we're talking about just the county contribution for retiree, whether-
Current ones.
Current retirees, whether pre-sixty-five or post-sixty-five?
Correct.
Okay. But the program in nineteen ninety-nine, it actually cost three hundred thousand. Am I correct? Because our contribution was a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good way to look at it.
Okay. If our contribution is one point eight million, what does the program cost?
Um, the whole health insurance, we're not-
No, just the pre-sixty-five, post-sixty-five. The equivalent number to the three hundred thousand in nineteen ninety-nine that said our intent in ninety-nine was a fifty-fifty split.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Where have we evolved to? Because we're not fifty-fifty.
We're, we have been fifty-fifty.
But we're twenty-five, seventy-five on-
On some, yes, I mean-
Grandfathered.
On the grandfathered ones who are post-sixty-five.
Our intent in nineteen ninety-nine, when we said this was an okay idea, was to be fifty-fifty, and it was a hundred and fifty thousand for a three hundred thousand dollar expense. Today, we're at one point eight million for a fill-in-the-blank expense.
Three point six. It should be three point six.
Truly?
Yes.
But we're at seventy-five percent contribution?
No, 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 no. Uh, you only have a small group that you are paying seventy-five percent.
But if we're paying seventy-five percent for one, it ought not be one point eight million times two, three point six?
Yeah, because I doubled it. You're probably a little more. I, I don't have that number. I mean, I really don't see that one.
I just wonder, I just wonder, why are we not moving from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand thirteen? If we got off track at two thousand five and realized it, if we got off track at two thousand two and realized, why are we not moving back to a fifty-fifty?
No, we did. That's what I'm saying. In two thousand five, two thousand six, when we had to adjust and we worked our way, now, we do have a small segment when, when we agreed that we would not be-
We have two hundred and eighty-one and a hundred and six, I mean, that's what I'm seeing on this spreadsheet, is two hundred and eighty-one grandfathered post-sixty-five and a hundred and sixty-some pre-sixty-five. So, that's like-
So, of that, of that post-sixty-five, you will have a group that you are paying seventy-five percent.
Why are we not moving back to fifty percent?
Because these are people who, I mean, they're eighty, and they have, I mean, that was a decision on this small group of people, that's what I'm saying. It evolved into, it was supposed to be fifty-fifty, but it was a fake rate. So, once we got the rate, we said, "We cannot do that to these people." So, we will recognize, we brought them up a little, and they're paying twenty-five percent of the rate, and county's paying seventy-five for this segment of-
So, was it fake in nineteen ninety-nine, and their fifty percent really wasn't fifty percent?
I don't know what it was. I don't, I would like to think it was a real rate in ninety-nine.
And so, from ninety-nine to two thousand five, when we realized, two thousand four, two thousand five, when we realized the error, and it had, it had digressed to seventeen percent, that you said just a moment ago, then we said, "Oh, we can't go from seventeen percent back to fifty percent."
Right.
We'll just go to twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five, right.
But since two thousand five, we haven't made any more progress-
We have, oh, yes.
To get back to fifty percent.
No, okay, again, it's, you stratify that group of people who are post-sixty-five, and you grandfathered some. You grandfathered this post-sixty-five, and you said, "This group, you will remain, and you pay twenty-five." Now, this next group, we started coming up and said, "Okay, now, y'all are coming on, you're going to be paying fifty."
Those are the non-grandfathered, post-sixty-five.
At, at, kind of late at our meeting, I sent y'all an email at our budget meeting last week. That document shows, it is the grid, it's four or five pages, and it shows the different groups. That grandfathered group who had to have thirty years by a certain date, they're in that seventy-five percent bracket. We, we stratified it, like Lisa said, depending on how many years of service you had with us, this was the package included in your retiree benefits and the percentage you would pay.
And then there's a, there was another group, those people who, who were sixty-five, still working, but we, you know, we didn't want to affect them either. but we, you know, we didn't want to affect them either, we didn't want them all retiring. So, that was a concern, it's like, oh my gosh, if we do this, and we said fifty percent, you know, you're going to have some good teachers leaving, you don't want them to leave. So we said, okay, we will work into fifty percent, and it was over a five-year period of time that we would get them to fifty percent of the premium. So we have done that on our post-sixty-fives.
Who aren't grandfathered.
Who aren't grandfathered, and may still be working today.
Is the same consulting group working for us today that helped formulate into the actives and the pre-sixty-five retirees, and then the grandfathered, the non-grandfathered, I mean, do we still have those?
We have, okay, two different groups that we work with. One group, which is Cigna, our current group, and Cowan Benefits, work to set the rates, that's one group. Our other group is the same group that we've worked with at the beginning, they've changed, they used to be CCA Strategies, and then they were bought by Bradford, J C Bradford, and now they've been bought out by Aon. They've been Aon, same person that we work with, she's the one who determines and calculates the actuarial cost of giving this benefit to the future, what is the cost, our actuarially, let's see, actual required contribution, as far as my audit. Y'all don't really ever see that number, that's that number, that's eleven million dollars, and I think Jeff said, about a million dollars, that is a cost to the system that we don't recognize, we're not calculating. Here's the difference, I'm, you're not a teacher, but tho- those that are teachers, that are a member of TCRS. Okay, actuarial study is done every two years for that program as well. They determine what we pay, have to pay as a percentage of salary, and we pay it. Based on that actuary, this is how long these people are going to live, this is what they're making, this is what they project when they quit working, this is what they're going to get, this is how long they're going to live, this is what we're going to pay out, rollback, this is what the cost is today, for us, it's twelve sixty-nine percent of payroll. And we pay it, that same theory is done on OPEB. It says, if you want to, what we should be doing is putting this money aside to be able to pay benefits in the future for you, you're not ready to retire, but to be able to pay you in the future, we should be putting money aside. We don't, we tried, we tried to build balances, and we were making some headway to start being able to fund our future costs, but the, we had, the fund, the insurance fund, had a loss in twenty-twelve of two point six million dollars. That has nothing to do with OPEB and whatever, premiums, we're on track to have another loss this year. So part of this discussion is our premiums are not at a level that they should be, not even counting this stuff in the future, today, we don't have enough premiums. I just contrast it, we don't do the same thing for our employees with their post-employment benefits as we do their pensions, we fund the pensions, we do not fund the post-employment benefit of insurance.
I would think as a, as a teacher coming out of the university setting, looking for a career, that, you know, if that's, if that's the way we're going to treat our pre-sixty-five retirees, I would think that would make us a much less attractive profession.
You know, it's, it's a decision, the decision you have to make is, what are we going to charge our retirees? And what's it going to cost to do that? I mean, to me, that, it gets down to that simple.
Well, and, and, and the answer to that is, at some point, we need to know exactly what it would cost to blend those hundred and sixty-five pre-retirees, pre-sixty-five retirees into, what do we have, four thousand, I mean, how many employees do we have across the?
It's about forty-seven hundred on insurance.
So forty-seven hundred total, and put a hundred and sixty-five in their claims into the big. They'll be able to determine that factor pretty quick, I would think.
But, accounting-wise, even if you blend that rate, and blend all day long, I'm going to look at all the pre-sixty-fives and say, this is the cost of their claims.
But, but that'd be different, Ms. Nolan, that'd be different every year.
It is, that's why you have these.
That's why some years, some years they may do very well, and some years they may not.
And you can see, for the last two years, they have been bad, so, so is that trend, or is that, is that something?
You know, I, my crystal ball's not any better than yours, I guess, but, I mean, that's, that's the whole theory in the law of large numbers, that, that that cures a lot of the eels by, by having the big part.
Uh, you know, and, and we go back, back again, is, what is the, what is the rate, but then I go back to, because of Gadsby, reporting standards, I got to find out, how much does it cost to give that retiree a benefit, separate from what does it cost for active employee?
Metro Police have been on heightened alert in the wake of the tragedy in Boston.
So, I mean, if I said, what is the rate, if we, if that benefit was not given at all, what is the rate? Or what is the cost? And then you add, but if our retirees come in, this is the cost to give the benefit. I understand where you're going, is that, yes, I'm not disputing that when you blend the people, it is the same, but you still, even if you blend, I got to drill, drill down and say, okay, but to give the benefit to retirees, even if you blend it, this is the cost, and it goes back to their claims.
But it's, it's, it's more of a, in our situ, what we're looking more is the cost of the increase, the, the percentage of increase, you know, what you charge is one thing, but, but hitting them over the head with an absurd increase is, is what I think we've, we've all been talking about. Is, I mean, the rate is what it's going to be, because, you know, it's all based on age and a lot of times gender. And, uh, it, it's the percentage of increase that, that has disturbed us, and, and that's what, that's what, that's the crux of our issue, I believe, I think, I think I'm saying it correctly.
And, and that's fine, I just get back to, what are we going to charge, and how much of that premium is the county going to fund? You know, if, if we, you know, based on the analysis of Cigna and, and Cowan and Melissa, this is what the rate should be for pre-sixty-fives. Wait, no, I know, but I'm saying, you, but it goes down to, this is what it costs, for me, this is what it costs, but.
But it's that way because it, they were separated, and they're.
But they've always been separated, and their rates have, previous to this year, their rates have covered it, actually, not really, because last year it didn't cover it.
But I mean, industry-wide, you know, for the last several years, the rates for health insurance, it's climbed exponentially, for whatever reason, and I, I certainly don't know all the reasons, but, uh, again, I apologize for talking so much, but I'm.
Where we see increases in the active employees, are we giving alternate plans?
Yes.
That, that give options?
Yes, what we, what we've done.
I understand that we've got that.
Yes.
My question really is, we see this increase in the pre-sixty-five retirees, is there a possibility or a proposal for an alternate plan that would give them the option of some other coverage? Because I see my, you know, number one, number two, number three, you know, these other premium rates and everything for the active employees, but I see kind of one proposal for the pre-sixty-fives, and you're going up fifty percent, it's your only option.
You've got two, you've got a co-pay plan and a deductible plan, you've got two plans.
Okay, I do see that now, yes, is the, is, are one, is one of those a new offering because of the fifty percent increase?
No, I mean, that, that's what we've had.
Are there any?
Well, the, the co-pay, yes, that's right, we, he's right, co-pay or deductible?
The co-pay.
Co-pay, you're right, co-pay is new, it took, it replaced one other one that was, that had horrible experience.
But it doesn't give them an option of, you don't have to go up by fifty percent, you could take this alternate plan that only goes up thirty percent.
I'm not sure you could do that, I'm not sure that you could, you could separate them with, with different coverages like that.
Y'all getting in an area that I'm not, I'm not going in.
I mean, I'm not positive about that, but I'm not sure you, you could, I mean, again, I'm not sure, that's not another form of discrimination against them.
Well, we're offering different plans to the active employees.
But so are, but we offer them too, we've got three plans for the active and three plans for the pre-sixty.
We have three for the active and two for the retirees.
I thought, okay, I thought you said we enacted a third one for them also.
No, we got rid of one, we've, do you have any, we, because the, the, the H.
HRA?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's only for the actives.
Okay.
So anyway, I, I didn't come to sway your mind in which way, but just know that what is decided does have an impact for now and future.
Well, I hope you felt welcomed.
I just love coming down.
Ms. Nolan, I, I'll just say, I appreciate you coming and sharing that information with us, and I want you to understand what you do, uh, that we've been pressured by the pre-sixty-five. And, and a lot of the groups that were being pressured by are the ones that were going to retire this year. And, so now, I think there's probably several of them that may have different thoughts, and I guess that cost, that pre-sixty-five cost is going to be the same, whether, whether, the rate, whether they retire or don't retire.
You know, I guess I would, anybody who is pre-sixty-five, we do not have a crystal ball about what's going to happen, and, and around this table, I don't know if y'all are going to guarantee what their rate's going to be, it's just that, you know, they've got to be prepared that rates will fl- you know.
But they will for all employees.
It will for all of us.
Because rating, rates, rates are going to increase.
And if, if that is going to sway your decision of should I retire, should I not retire, if that's the siding point, my recommendation to them would be, you know, if, if that's the tipping point, maybe you should reconsider.
Fifty percent rate increase would certainly make a difference for me.
Yeah, I mean, I just want, want you to know, we're, we're not shooting at you.
I know, I didn't feel that way, I feel welcome here.
Well, we just, you know, I just felt it's important that, you know, while we're hammered.
And, and I do, I just wanted y'all to know what the impact is, and I didn't bring this up, but the other piece of it, when we borrow money, and we borrow money for schools, we are rated by two rating agencies, Moody's and S and P. S and P is the group that, that really hammered hard on the mayor and I, on what are you doing with your post-employment benefit, what strides are you making to take care of this issue? Now, on my side, I'm sweating up here, if we go to seventy percent, I'm going to have to say, we've made it worse. We didn't make it better, we have made it worse, now, that's just, I don't know what, that's not, that's just something that we'll have to deal with, if it goes this way, but they are looking, and I know that y'all have heard the same news reports I've had, on the governments that are struggling and have problems, and it is because of two issues, it's their pension and their post-employment benefit.
I agree, I just, I appreciate the job you do, and, and.
Well, anyway, I, I would do what y'all do, so, I'll go back and do my numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan.
Anybody else, anything further?
I guess I'm still a little unclear here, are we going to look, ask them to come back with a proposal and tell us what it would cost to blend, or we just?
It's, is that possible, Ms. Nolan, for us to have some actual hard numbers, what, what it would do to, to blend?
I mean, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's not a problem, saying, what is the blended rate? I'm still going to have to say, how much does it cost, how much are we paying toward that premium?
That's just a reporting issue, right?
Yes.
It's a reporting.
We're looking at cost, we just want to look at cost, is all we're going to look at, we want to know what it's costing us to blend and not to blend, that's the only two things we want to look at.
I, I think what Lisa is trying to say, in this blending issue, it will affect this liability that we are having to record, that's currently at about a million a month, it will help drive it up because the actuaries will go through and look, okay, so you're changing your funding to thirty, seventy, instead of fifty-fifty, and I, that, that's, I think, the, that, that is in our final financial statements that the county issues, which includes the school board, of course.
Well, I guess I'm, the way I would look at that is, maybe we'd want to look at going forty, sixty, or, there's ways to balance this out, and I think you're active, I just talked to a thirty-year-old active teacher, she said, you know, I'd rather pay more now, pay less later, than I had, you know, to pay less now and pay more later.
And, and that is the theory that Gadsby forty-five is trying to push our governments to, and when I was on, in private industry, we went through this in the nineties, where we had to start recording this cost.
So if you, if, to do that, we just need to add, it would be eleven million plus to your current budget to start funding those costs in the future.
We've got to draw a line somewhere, I mean, we've got, we've got a problem here, if we don't correct it, it's only going to get worse.
And that's the point.
But, let me, if, if you raised how much the county pays, then that's going to put the county deeper in a hole that we're not funding for, right?
Right, we're not funding.
But, but we're not, we're not going to be paying more, it's still the same money, those people are there, the claims are there, it's just that they're going to be part of a larger pool that everyone is going to share, so, we're not, we're not, it's not costing the county any more money, it is just keeping that particular group that has been basically disenfranchised out of the big group, and because they're now older and they have health issues, now, they, their premium versus their claims will sometimes, and maybe for the last two years, earn them a, a higher premium, but that doesn't.
But, but let me ask this then, I mean, if you take the pre-sixty-five and put them in with the active, and it balances out, it could, it could raise the active's premium too.
Oh, it will raise the active.
So, I mean, we'll, we'll be having to pay more on actives.
On actives, that's why I'm, that's why I keep going back, you'll have to raise more on the active. The cost is still there, it's just spread around.
It's spreading.
But the cost is still there, and then we, we'll have to.
So we're, we're asking the actives, who may be twenty-one, twenty-two years old, who never went to the doctor that year, to pay part of the share for the older pre-sixty-five.
But that is the theory of insurance, that's why you have insurance there, is to share the risk.
I'll end up in hospital tomorrow.
That's why, that's why we're not spring chickens anymore, and that's why we're hopeful that's happening.
I'm going to get my, I'm going to get my fare share outside, I'm going to go out tomorrow and get my money.
All right, Ms. Nolan.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can let you rest now. I guess between now and tomorrow night, if you got any strong feelings one way or another, bring them with you, I guess. Mr. Oldham?
Mr. Chairman, we have not covered item six, because that's a highlight of Holloway High School, I certainly understand that, we didn't cover item fifteen, we were given that packet of information tonight, and we didn't cover item sixteen, and I just want to be clear that.
You had that basically in your handout on the budget night.
I do understand that we have been given a, a preview of that, but the idea that the items that we not cover on the agenda are things that we just accept without discussion, or we're informed about, I personally don't anticipate that to be the case with item sixteen, I anticipate discussion of that, and if it's appropriate for that to happen in work session rather than in board meeting, I just wanted to raise that issue.
The reason, the reason we, the reason we did numbers, uh, jump over these items, as you know, spotlight, Holloway's not here.
Sure.
Okay, uh, fifteen, we never discussed, that was work session.
Right.
And sixteen, I questioned Mr. Oldham on that, and, and he requested we do it tomorrow night, so, uh, just in a nutshell, that's why we.
Understood.
It wasn't, I didn't skip over it intentionally, it's just, uh, Mr. Oldham wanted to do it tomorrow night.
If we've got a crowd coming, I'd rather them, if we're doing for that, then let's just let them see it.
If we got a crowd coming, I'd rather them, if we're doing for that, then let's just let them see it.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Can I thank Ms. Nolan again for coming, and, and I apologize, I, I didn't mean to talk so much, but this is something that, that I really feel passionate about, and.
Anything else? Nothing else to say about tomorrow night?
All right, somebody's gonna tell me why I couldn't pull up my.